Good evening, welcome. Thanks for coming to your city council meeting. We're gonna, oh. We're gonna get started. Abigail will help with the volume. Thank you. First thing we're gonna do is remind ourselves to silence our cell phones. We're gonna skip the land acknowledgement tonight, but I will give the first announcement that Indigenous People's Day is gonna be four weeks from today. We will be celebrating that here in Hood River. The mayor will be hosting lunch for invited Indians who I'm in touch with, so I hope that many of you will join us for the event. I'm coordinating with some community volunteers about exactly what the ceremony will be, but that's coming up on October, I think it's ninth. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
We'll now recess the city council meeting and I'll hand it over to Chair Zan Miller.
Good evening. This is the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for September 11th. Welcome, welcome. It's a pretty quick one, so we'll get right through it and on to business. Any agenda additions or corrections?
No.
Okay, business from the audience. Jürgen signed up to talk, and so please push the little wait button and off you go.
Hi, Jürgen Hess, and some of you have heard my talk before. Is there anybody that didn't get this report? Abigail, do you know that?
I mentioned that Commissioner Shepard from the port, this is his first meeting, so I'll make sure he gets a copy of that, that you distributed at the last meeting. Super. Thank you.
Well, thanks for having me, Tim. And I am here because I found out relatedly that the urban renewal project was gonna have major impact on that project that a whole bunch of volunteers, my wife and I have been involved in for 23 years now. In 2000, the city, not the city, ODOT wanted to expand 12th Street, and they did. And I was at, I was at chair of the planning commission at the time, and I asked my wife, said, "Do you wanna help plant that?" She says, "Yes." So we did that over a number of years, and a couple of people, Mark, Megan were involved in that too. And we planted that, so that would be the east side of 12th Street, where it comes right down to Indian Creek. We planted it with native plants. I carried water up from Indian Creek with five-gallon buckets. I was younger, stronger. And we wanted to provide a spot of beauty for the city, and also something for wildlife using native plants. And we got a lot of help. We got, see, 29 volunteers that helped us plant that over the years. A lot of them are still here. We got students from the high school, we got students from the college. We got a lot of support. The city said, "Yes, go for it." And the county said the same thing in the watershed group. Megan was there at the time. And we got a grant from SOL, Stock, Organ, Fentanyl, and Litter. And ODOT helped us. So a lot of work in it. What we've done is planted that area right next to, there's a chain link fence, there's about a six-foot sidewalk and a chain link fence. We planted that all with choke chairs, which provide habitat and food for birds. We have gotten help from county corrections crew to help us maintain that slope in there. And have a nice relationship with them. They come in here and weed whack it, and what we, in spite of that, we had a major impact with a major fire in 2014. I don't know if any of you remember that. It was a balloon started a fire off Nick's Drive and it came across arcing and it blew up into a major fire. Fortunately, the fire folks got there instantly, but we still lost a whole bunch of plants. Pacific Power gave us a grant. We worked with the city, the city then helped us replant a lot of that area. We've gotten a lot of publicity from the newspapers and other people. I just want to give you one example. We planted little baby oaks that were two inches tall. Those oaks are taller than that ceiling now. So there's been a lot of progress, and we feel good about it. Every time my wife and I go picking up litter along the sidewalk there, we always get somebody shout out, "Yeah, thank you." And that's kinda neat. So a lot of people in the community know what we're doing here. However, we didn't want to get any publicity to us, so we never put a plaque there and said, "Here's what we did," starting in 2000. Maybe we should do some kind of a little thing, because there's a lot of new people, or people that didn't know of all the work that we did, all the thousands of hours that we and all these volunteers worked. So something to think about for the future, to bring attention to it, because there's people come and go. The successes have been, like I said, the little baby oaks that are not tall. We've created this habitat with the choke chairs right next to it. Ryan Pike, Jake over there, who I do a lot of business with, I'm a landscape architect, and he's always given me advice about what kind of irrigation system here and there. And he says, "You know, I really think what you and your wife organized and got going there was really great." He says, "I take my son up there and show him, see, this is what people can do. Get out there and make your community better." So our concern is, in this report, I've copied that section of the Hood River Plan. The concern is that the Hood River Urban Renewal Plan has a proposal in there to wipe out all those choke chairs, push the chain link fence, put a retaining wall in there. And we just, oh, we just cry over that. And we think when something such a community resource would be lost, we think that would be terrible. But there's an alternative. That same proposal, and I understand why they wanted to do it, to create a wider bike way through there and walkway. That could be on the west side of 12th Street. Pretty simple thing. You gotta get people over there, but there's a lot of people walking and go there already, going out to the college and stuff. So that's, that's, to me, a very good alternative, and we'll keep this community resource. So what would I like? I would like the urban renewal plan to change, recognizing that's a community resource. I'd like to have that taken out of there. Or at least put in there that it's in conflict with this proposal, but I think it'd be better just to, because I'm not gonna hurt my 29 volunteers. I don't do that. But there's a lot of people very concerned. I think that urban renewal project should be amended and adjusted to take that off and put it on the west side of 12th Street. We'd like some acknowledgement of that there's a conflict there. That's kind of it. I wanted, didn't want to take a lot of time. I know you guys want to...
Good evening, welcome. Thanks for coming to your city council meeting. We're gonna, oh. We're gonna get started. Abigail will help with the volume. Thank you. First thing we're gonna do is remind ourselves to silence our cell phones. We're gonna skip the land acknowledgement tonight, but I will give the first announcement that Indigenous People's Day is gonna be four weeks from today. We will be celebrating that here in Hood River. The mayor will be hosting lunch for invited Indians who I'm in touch with. So I hope that many of you will join us for the event. It's I'm coordinating with some community volunteers about exactly what the ceremony will be. But that's coming up on October, I think it's ninth. Pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the plan of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, justice.
We'll now recess the city council meeting and I'll hand it over to Chair Zan Miller.
Good evening. This is the Urban Renewal Agency meeting for September 11th. Welcome, welcome. It's a pretty quick one, so we'll get right through it and on the business. Any agenda additions or corrections? Okay, business from the audience. Jürgen signed up to talk. And so please push the little white button and off you go.
Jürgen has, and some of you have heard my talk before. Did, is there anybody that didn't get this report? Abigail, do you know that?
I'll mention that Commissioner Shepherd from the port, this is his first meeting, so I'll make sure he gets a copy of that, that you distributed at the last meeting. Super, thank you.
Well, thanks for having me, Tim. I am here because I found out relatedly that the Urban Renewal Project was gonna have major impact on a project that a whole bunch of volunteers, my wife and I have been involved in for 23 years now. In 2000, the city, or not the city, ODOT wanted to expand 12th Street, and they did. And I was on a, was a chair of the planning commission at the time, and I went and asked my wife, said, do you wanna help plant that? She says, yes. So we did that over a number of years, and a couple of people, Mark, Megan were involved in that too. And we planted that, so that would be, this is the east side of 12th Street, where it comes right down to Indian Creek. We planted it with native plants. I carried water up from Indian Creek with five gallon buckets. I was younger, stronger. And we wanted to provide a spot of beauty for the city. And also something for wildlife using native plants. And we got a lot of help. We got, see, 29 volunteers that helped us plant that over the years. A lot of them are still here. We, we got students from the high school, we got students from the college. We, we got a lot of support. The city said, yes, go for it. And the county said the same thing in the watershed group. Megan was there at the time. And we got a grant from SOL, Stock Organ Fertilism and Litter. And ODOT helped us. So there's a lot of work in it. Well, what we've done is planted that area right next to you. There's a chain link fence, there's about a six foot sidewalk and a chain link fence. We planted that all with choke chairs, which provide habitat and food for birds. We have gotten help from county corrections crew to help us maintain that slope in there. And I have a nice relationship with them. They come in here and weed whack it. And what we, in spite of that, we had a major impact with a major fire in 2014. I don't know if any of you remember that. It was a balloon started a fire off Nick's Drive and it came across arcing. And it blew up into a major fire. Fortunately, the fire folks got there instantly, but we still lost a whole bunch of plants. Pacific Power gave us a grant. We worked with the city, the city, then helped us replant a lot of that area. The, we've gotten a lot of publicity from the newspapers and other people. I just want to give you one example. We planted little baby oaks that were two inches tall. Those oaks are taller than its ceiling now. So there's been a lot of progress and we feel good about it. We get, every time my wife and I go picking up litter along, along the sidewalk there, we always get somebody shout out, yay, thank you. And that's kinda neat. So a lot of people in the community know what we're doing here. However, we didn't wanna get any publicity to us. So we never put a plaque there and said, here's what we did, starting in 2000. Maybe we should do some kind of a little thing, because there's a lot of new people. Or people that didn't know of all the work that we did, all the thousands of hours that we and all these volunteers worked. So something to think about for the future, to bring attention to it, because there's people come and go. The successes have been, like I said, the little baby oaks that are not tall. We've created this habitat with the choke chairs right next to it. Ryan Pike, Jake over there, who I do a lot of business with, Emma Landscape Architect, and then he's always given me advice about what kind of irrigation system here and there. And he says, you know, I really think what you and your wife organized and got going there was really great. He says, I take my son up there and show him, see, this is what people can do. Get out there and make your community better. So our concern is, in this record, I've copied that section of the Hood River Plan. The concern is that the Hood River Urban Renewal Plan has a proposal in there to wipe out all those choke chairs, push the chain link fence, put in the retaining wall in there. And we just, oh, we just cry over that. And we think when something such a community resource would be lost, we think that would be terrible. But there's an alternative. That same proposal, and I understand why they wanted to do it, to create a wider bike way through there and walkway. That could be on the west side of 12th Street. Pretty simple thing. You gotta get people over there, but there's a lot of people walk in and go there already, going out to the college and stuff. So that's, that's a, to me, a very good alternative, and what to keep this community resource. So what would I like? I would like the Urban Renewal Plan to change, recognizing that's a community resource. I'd like to have that taken out of there, or at least put in there that it's in conflict with this proposal. But I think it'd be better just to, because I'm not gonna hurt my 29 volunteers. I don't do that. But there's a lot of people very concerned. I think that Urban Renewal Project should be amended and adjusted to take that off and put it on the west side of 12th Street. We'd like some acknowledgement of that there's a conflict there. That's kind of it. I, I wanted, didn't want to take a lot of time. I know you guys have things going on tonight. So some of you have heard this before, some of you have been involved in this. You can't, we can't do a Q and A during this public commentary, but I wanted to let you know that we're here. We, if you do have any questions about what's this, what's that, I'm easy to find. Thank you.
Thank you, Jürgen. Would, would anyone else like to speak to the Urban Renewal Agency? I was remiss and like introduce Ben Shepherd as his first meeting as a Urban Renewal Agency member. So we're excited to have you. And do you want, you wanna give a speech? Um, cool. The next item on the agenda is consent agenda. There's a single meeting in there. I move we approve the consent agenda.
I will second.
And we have a first from Grant and a second from Megan. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed?
Gary, no.
Oh, say that again, Heather.
I.
Okay, sweet. And cheer votes aye, so on, on we go. Regular business items. Is it Adam or Abigail? Someone starts with an A.
I'm happy that our interim public works director is here to present to you.
And then they gave you an entire Monday night.
Yeah.
It's the Adam Show tonight.
All right. Good evening, Mayor, councilors. Welcome, Ben. No better way to kick off my evening than talking about trash cans. So we, the current trash cans we have in town, they're 25 plus years old. They're very difficult to clean. They're a concrete cylinder with a plastic can inside of them. What happens is garbage overflows in the can. It overflows in between the garbage can and the concrete cylinder, making it very difficult to clean out. They become very smelly in the summertime. The, the current lids that we have on them right now are, have become obsolete. We can no longer order them. They're not available. We had three of them this spring that were set on fire. So we burned up what we had in inventory for lids. So we're completely out of lids now. So it felt like this was a really good time to start looking at something that was a little more up to date. I've I've reached out to Hood River Garbage, spoke with Jamie Loomis and Jim Winterbottom. Very excited to hear that we're looking at doing something different. Also reached out to the city of Portland and spoke with, with the gentleman there that replaced trash cans in southeast Portland. He's the one who turned me on to a company called Secure. They're a complete metal, concrete, or a complete metal trash container. The hole's much smaller, doesn't allow for people to put in large household garbage bags. Will also keep out the rain, snow as well. The the graffiti, also, they got a powder coated finish with the cans that I've put in the proposal, that they're just black, basic trash containers. Powder coated, easy to remove any graffiti on them. They're, they're 10 inches smaller than the current, in diameter, the tension's smaller than the current cans that we have. So we would still maintain, gain a little bit of ADA accessibility on the sidewalks as well. The, the Hood River Garbage Company has also said they would give us the poly carts. So instead of lifting a container out, these have a lockable door on the front. And the, the poly cart comes out just like the, the garbage containers that you see in town here. So they would be able to use their truck, lift the can, dump it into the truck. So yeah, they were, the Hood River Garbage, super excited about it. They said they would donate, which was a savings of $700, $1,750 of the total cost, just by them giving us the, donating the poly cart. So any questions?
I, I have one, and it's just the money coming from Urban Renewal. Could, could staff talk to that, please?
Sure. Thank you for the question. I believe that we have funds in the urban, the downtown Urban Renewal District for some, I'm gonna call them maintenance, but maintenance is not allowed by Urban Renewal. Some ongoing smaller costs like this, there's just a, I don't know if it's $50,000 or a small amount. Recognizing that we, you know, that's currently how we maintain for downtown. We're gonna need to think about something in the future. But most of our Urban Renewal dollars for the Columbia Cascade District are toward bigger projects, not to the, not to the small maintenance pieces.
This is on page eight of your packet, and the fiscal impact does go into the Columbia Cascade District Materials and Services. There's, looks like $300,000 in that that account for this as well, so.
Any other questions, Tim or Heather? I can't. You were eclipsed. Megan, please.
Someone's face was a little wood. Yeah, just a quick question. I believe some of the existing round ones have some like recycling things hanging off the side. Is there? I don't know if it needs to be at every place, but is there gonna be some recycling available downtown?
So this is a conversation I had with Hood River Garbage. I think this would be maybe a conversation we should have in the future, doing a standalone areas around town. The, the current containers are usually just full of garbage, and especially the, like the plastic cups that you get at the coffee shops. They're, they're usually full of those. And so there's not a whole lot of recycling, unfortunately, that goes on in those current containers. So also something we should probably, and I agree, we should look at some, doing something as far as recycling containers.
Okay. Yeah, yes, Abigail, if we can flag that for a future discussion, it'd be nice to not put things that don't have to go in the landfill.
Yeah, agreed. I think some of this is, if you think about visitors coming to town, they might be from communities that have other recycling standards. And so they might think that things, they might wish cycle things, or hope or wish that things are recyclable that are not recyclable here in Hood River. So I think that's, there's definitely an education piece that would need to go with any facility we created.
Thank you.
Tim, were you about to jump in there? No. Okay. And Heather, you're good?
Yes, I'm good. No questions.
All right. Um, and there is a suggested motion?
Yes, suggested motion would be a staff recommendation authorized sole source procurement for 35 of the secure trash containers to replace the ones we have.
I move to authorize the Urban Renewal Agency Administrator to purchase 35 secure brand trash containers to replace the existing receptacles within the Columbia Cascade District at a cost not to exceed $39,369.
Second. We have a motion by Megan and a second by Grant. Any comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Any, any opposed? Hearing none, cheer votes aye as well. Motion carries. Next, next topic. Doors.
All right. Next topic, upgrading the doors on the existing Calais parking meters we have in town. We have 55 total pay stations in town. 22 of those pay stations were purchased back in 2008. They have many of you probably know, they have a button pad below the screen. The, the button pad has been extremely hard to replace. It is, Calais has talked about doing away with them, no longer producing them. The, those current screens, they're, the screen's smaller, they're difficult to see in the sunlight. The new ones are more user friendly. They have a larger screen, and it'll make all 55 of our pay stations all uniform, less confusing as well. So again, pretty straightforward. Staff recommendation would be to authorize the sole source procurement of 23, 22 touchscreen door panels to replace the old ones within the Columbia Cascade District.
I would just point out to folks listening that doors seems like an inexpensive piece of sheet metal. And in this case, it's the entire computer and UI and interface screen for the, for the boxes. So it's a very snazzy door. Any, you're, we're good? Any discussion, comment, questions? Seeing none, Heather or Tim? Okay, go ahead, Tim.
Nothing for me, Mark.
Okay. Uh, there is a motion on page 13.
I move to authorize the Urban Renewal Agency Administration to purchase 22 door upgrade kits on a sole source basis, based on conformity with existing infrastructure in the amount not to exceed $78,450.
Second. We have a motion by Doug and a second by Grant. Any other questions or comments? Real quick? All, all in favor, say aye? Any opposed? Heather, I, we're just kidding, of course. And that's, that, and cheer votes aye, so it's unanimous. Go for it. Could, could you, are, are we done with Dunkin's? Are they gone?
We're done with Dunkin's. They're gone. Yeah. I know you've talked about doing a project.
Yeah, we gotta, we gotta chat offline.
Yeah, we still, we still have them. Yeah, sooner than later, I'd like to get them on GovDeals and get those sold.
Cool, thanks. I'm going back to the agenda. Item is from agency members. So let's, let's just run through it real quick. Grant, nothing? Uh, Tim?
Nothing for me.
Heather?
Nothing for me.
Okey dokey. All right, at 22 after 6, the Urban Renewal Agency adjourns.
Great. I'll reconvene the city council meeting. Ben, good, you're, you're the agency whisperer, man. We all want you to, good job. Full credit. So I'm not sure, Steve, you came in, did you sign up to speak to council? You were looking at the table in that way of, okay. So I believe that, is, is there anyone who intended to speak to council tonight? Great. So moving on to the first presentation by Katie. Welcome.
In case, not. In case.
Here is in case.
Looks like, looks like something you own.
Hello.
Hello.
Last year I had to say where I lived. Nope.
We know where you work. It's okay.
I am Katie Cadle. For those of you don't know me, I am the CEO of Visit Hood River and the Chamber of Commerce. I am super excited to be here tonight and have Michelle Guidel from my team with me and Steve Tesmer coming in clutch for me. But I am in this role because I care deeply about our community. I have kids in our school system, and I am very passionate about the work that I get to do. And I'm excited to be here to share that all with you. Too simple. While Visit Hood River's founding task is to attract overnight visitors to our community, that effort and everything else we do points back toward building and sustaining the quality of life for residents, residents and businesses who call Hood River home. Overnight visitation to Hood River is a major source of revenue for the city of Hood River and one that comes at very little cost to the city itself. 25% of the transient lodging tax collections are reinvested in destination marketing, management, and stewardship through Visit Hood River. The vast majority of the TLT collection, 75%, this year just over $2 million of that is poured back into the city's general fund, which can be used to address the city's goals, such as equitable and diverse housing. In addition to TLT, Hood River County benefits from tourism through numerous other industries. In 2022, the Dean Runyon and Associates Economic Impact Analysis reports the following in visitor spending. 40.5 million in lodging, dining and food service, $24.9 million, $10.8 million in retail sales, $5.6 million in arts, entertainment and recreation, $10.6 million in local transportation and gas, and $8.2 million in our food stores, which is over $100 million in revenue to our county. Some of Visit Hood River's notable achievements in the most recent fiscal year, which we'll cover in the following slides, fall in the core areas of community reinvestment, local business advocacy, diversity, equity and inclusion, destination marketing, and destination stewardship. The Community Investment Grant Program is, provides matching grants for applicants that contribute to the development and improvement of the Hood River community by means of the enhancement, promotion, and sustainability of Hood River as a destination. We were able to increase our grant funding this year by over 135% and double the number of recipients. Grants were awarded to six organizations, and those funds will, will be used for projects, events, and other initiatives that benefit residents as much as, or even more than visitors. The six organizations include Hood River Area Trail Stewards, Button Bridge Comedy Jamboree, Hood River Hotel, Gorge Impact Film Festival, Music Festival of the Gorge, and Wild Wind and Water. It's not enough to just get people to visit Hood River. We want them to spend time and money in our destination. Through local programs like Shop Local, First Friday, and Hood River Holidays, our efforts ladder up to advocating for local businesses. Our Shop Local campaigns include Locals Wednesday, which is free parking on Wednesday's Labor Day through Memorial Day, Small Business Saturday, and Shop Local for the holidays, which is also supported by free parking through the city for the two weeks prior to Christmas, ongoing promotion of local businesses, and Shop Local fundraising campaigns. Most recently, we held one to raise money for the devastation in Maui. Bringing the community together to celebrate local makers, musicians, and businesses is at the heart of Hood River First Fridays, which we hold June through September. And I want to thank the city for all the support the last few years. It's been awesome. We continue to work with businesses and the city to build these events and have received awesome feedback to collaborate, collaborate specifically with our Latino community to bring even more makers and musicians into downtown each month. Safe Halloween downtown is a fun and playful tradition for downtown businesses to provide a safe environment to trick or treaters. Thanks to the collaboration with Gladys and Abigail last week, we have some fun ideas brewing for the event this year. Hood River Holidays is a community festival designed to bring residents and businesses together to celebrate the magic of the holiday season with artisans, vendors, a window display contest, and the always anticipated interactive floats. This event is not possible without the support of our local businesses who, and sponsors who underwrite the lighting of the trees that lie in the streets, along with the large tree. And last year, for the first time, we were able to translate our whole tree lighting program, which we will continue to build upon. We're committed to finding authentic ways to build community. We will keep our program shorter this year because it was very long. So, New York Blackbird, you have to help us with that. We also hold monthly networking events. First, we have our monthly Uh, we also hold monthly networking events. First, um, we have our monthly morning brews, which is coffee, coffee chat. And then our first Thursdays, which it used to be business after hours. We also rebranded Luncheon Learns to uh, be the Taste of Success workshops, which we hold quarterly. And we're how we're proud to support ribbon cuttings for new businesses, business relocations and grand reopenings. Additionally, in business advocacy, I am currently collaborating on a destination agreement to creatively and thoughtfully grow TLT within our existing properties. In uh, we continue to work on ourselves and our organization to be strong allies in our community. In collaboration with the Columbia Gorge Pride Alliance, the Hood River Hotel and Mayor Blackburn as our grand marshal, we were able to host the Hood River Pride Celebration in June. Visit Hood River applied for and was awarded a grant from Travel Oregon to develop and implement a DEI training program for Visit Hood River Board and Staff as well as chamber businesses. We're currently working with the Nextdoor Inc. to um, on focus groups, content development and facilitation of that training. We want to make sure that we are understanding where people feel included and welcomed, existing that exist in our community before we're trying to bring other people into our community if we don't know what is actually welcoming to them. Um, I uh, also attended a Latino outreach workshop through the Nextdoor. Um, I recommend it for anybody who's interested. Phenomenal program and completed a six-month equity, diversity and inclusion leadership series. Destination marketing, supposed to be at the heart of what we're doing, but we get to do so much more. We have turned our messaging into to be more inclusive with your people. We're focused on responsible travel, generating off-peak demand and spreading that demand away from the heavily trafficked tourist traps in Hood River. We set accurate expert expectations for visitors throughout their journey as to not compromise values for visits. There's a couple examples of our your people um, digital ads. We want to attract like-minded people and reinforce their value set. Uh, reinforce their values, set expectations for their visits and behaviors. New to Visit Hood River this year and um, Doug and Mark have both heard me talk about this is Datafy, which is a data analytics solution that'll help us create uh, data-driven strategies for everything from destination stewardship to marketing to even destination development based on the behaviors of what our our visitors are doing. And so we can see, we're collecting data through um, GPS on cars as well as um, cell phones. Yes, it's creepy. We strive to help build a sustainable destination through education, outreach and advocacy and ultimately position Hood River as a place worthy of respect and protection and educate consumers on how to visit nicely, responsibly and respectfully. Thank you. I look forward to collaborating continuously with all of you. Any questions?
Thank you, Katie, so much. Thanks for all your good work and your volunteers and staff and I got to tour the mayors around downtown last month for the for the for the uh, mayor's conference and you greeted us so warmly at the office. Thank you. Gladys?
Katie, thank you so much for being here today. I love the update, but I just want to take a moment to commend you, applaud you for taking the time to learn and taking these additional trainings. It is so important when that happens on the top from the top and then has the ability to ripple all the way down. And and that's really uh, the only way that we're going to make meaningful change moving forward. So I appreciate the time that you've taken to just learn and become aware and to hear it directly from those community members as opposed to assuming that you know what folks need and want. So thank you for that.
Thank you, and I appreciate your feedback and just the candidness of our relationship to be able to do those things. So thank you.
Other questions for Kay? Megan?
Um, well, second Gladys said, uh, I think compared to you, I don't know when we last had this, a year or two ago, it's really nice to see um, the expansion and and yeah, the outreach you're doing and who you're reaching out to. Um, and and I think the enhanced focus on, you know, management and responsible tourism. Um, I am wondering like long-term are I don't know what the metrics would be, but are you, have you been hearing any success from business owners or community members or people are getting that message or how will we measure that like in two years or five years of tourists are being more respectful or are learning how to be good tourists?
Yeah, I think that we've heard from tourists that they're getting the messaging. Um, definitely um, the behaviors that we've seen in uh, in businesses that are willing to come and share that information with us, right? Um, I think what we need to remember is that our, we have multiple levels of visitors. So our visitors that are staying overnight are not necessarily the ones that are dumping in the garbage cans, their home garbage or their food that they brought here. So um, I think our our lodgers are seeing um, a difference in behavior. Um, I haven't heard as much from people about the um, misbehavior of bachelor parties this year. Um, but so so I don't, as far as that, it's kind of an interesting KPI to try to. But I think in getting feedback from business is really the main way that we're going to do that. And then um, and from organizations like Atrax and what are people doing up there when they're um, in our trails? Are they coming when we're telling them not to? Because if they are, then you know, we have a problem there. But I think we've seen a lot of um, great behavior changes when we're saying, hey, it's too muddy, don't come ride. Hey, you can't have fires, don't come out here. Uh, you know, it was a bummer, we had to change or um, cancel the Fourth of July event, but I think people are understanding and respectful of we are a community that people live and raise their children in and so haven't gotten any negative feedback.
I'll take positive. I mean, that sounds good. And yeah, I don't think there's a metric, but it's nice to hear that you have been getting feedback on.
I want to encourage people that to come to us with feedback. It is, you know, trying to get feedback. I think we all know, it doesn't matter, the surveys in person, online, it is, it is difficult getting that feedback. So I want everyone, you know, my my email's on our website, it's on the slide presentation, my phone number, I'm I'm open to feedback and and hearing what people want to see or or do differently, for sure. I can't do everything, but.
Uh, following up on that question. Since, I mean, council is at First Fridays, is that something that maybe we could support with helping with some sort of in-person support or insert in-person surveys? Um, I also wonder if there's a link or somewhere on your website where that survey lives and maybe the city could market that messaging to ensure that locals also have the ability to really give that input. Yes, we want to have visitors, but if there's new ideas that our current locals have that could help enhance and whatnot, that I think that would be really valuable.
Absolutely. We actually currently um, Visit Hood River isn't um, doing it directly, but with our region. We have put out a resident sentiment survey that's been out for a couple of weeks, so maybe we could link that to the website. That would be huge.
It makes me chuckle a little bit, the timing that you just made that comment and like Labor Day was six days ago, like with we might feel a little differently in this week and in March, so just, I don't know if that would be useful to get that.
Oh, it is super. I mean, yeah, it definitely depends on when you put that survey out there.
Because somebody who shall remain nameless taught me about an annual event, which is on Labor Day evening, you stand on the Second Street Bridge and you go bye-bye, bye-bye, which is kind of funny and kind of true.
Yeah. I've heard talks about a like, we want our town back.
Yeah.
Event.
So there's there's both.
Yeah.
Other questions, comments for Katie? Thanks so much for your great work. It's a, I I I was kind of going for pandemic and I mean, it's from my perspective, it's really, you guys have really emerged from pandemic stronger than ever and you guys are doing a great, great job.
Thank you, and I appreciate that you say you guys, because it is a team effort. There's four of us and we are tiny, but we we work our, we work hard. So, thank you.
Katie, I'm sorry to interrupt, but before you leave, can you talk about your new office and where you're located?
We are located at Second and Cascade, right next to uh, River Days. We just moved our visitor center and the chamber offices there. We're still um, under construction.
That's a great location.
Yeah, it is. It's nice. We get to see lots more people just pop in.
Are you, are you in the front facing windows or, okay?
Yeah.
Where the mortgage broker was.
Yes, and we are in process of making it not look like we just took over the mortgage broker's office.
I've been, it looks great so far, I gotta say.
Yeah. Thank you.
Great, moving on to the consent agenda?
Can we pull two items off there?
Yes, we'll pull the OLCC permits off.
I move we approve, I am number one from the consent agenda.
By Grant? Second. Second by Mark. This discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Chair votes aye, motion passes. Can uh, let's do the two OLCCs together.
I would move we approve number two from the consent agenda.
Moved by Megan?
Second.
Second by Grant. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Stained by Gladys. Chair votes aye, motion passes.
Can I make a comment around that really quick? Um, so it, I've received emails around why I'm abstaining from OLCC licenses and I think this is an appropriate time to really let folks know why to talk about this a couple of meetings ago, so I'm happy to continue the conversation or reiterate the importance. Um, our job as city councillors, the mayor is to look at, you know, we have our city, city goals and a couple of those being equitable and inclusive communities, well and maintained and safe community, efficient and safe transportation systems. Our district attorney has continued to come to these meetings and just stating how she continues to see the rise of DUIs within the county, and I think it's really important that we do everything that we can to ensure that there is the appropriate level of access. For some of you that may or may not know, I have a background in in healthcare and I focus a lot on really the social determinants of health. What are these social factors that allow an individual to thrive? So ensuring they have appropriate housing, transportation, all of these um, resources. And unfortunately, something that we have found is that there could be some unintentional consequences in our language and our policies that exist that are preventing more transportation options from being viable and accessible to our community members. And to me, I just don't feel that I can continue to support something that continues to come up as as an issue within our community. So I, that is why I will continue to abstain. Our city staff is absolutely working to understand what the barriers in our current policies are taking place. And I think overall, regardless, our policies that were there ten years ago have to be updated. The policies that will be written this year will have to be updated ten years from now. I mean, we're going to continue looking at at these. So for those reasons, I will continue abstaining. I recognize that for some businesses, selling alcohol is the way that they make money and generate revenue. I'm not trying to stand in the way of that, but I will continue to abstain until I really see that there are more transportation options, especially for those that could be potentially visiting the gorge or more importantly, for our residents that live here year round. So.
Thank you, Gladys. Um, moving on to our first action item, wastewater treatment plant. Adam, again.
Alright. Uh, Adam Schmidt, City of Hood River Public Works Department, Operations Manager, Interim Public Works Director. Uh, wastewater treatment plant facility uh, plan. Um, city is interested in completing wastewater facility plan uh, project with Windsor Engineers. Uh, this contract would consist of Windsor Engineers heading the project with Jacobs Engineering Team as a subcontractor. What what is a wastewater, what is a wastewater facility treatment plant uh, plan? Uh, the plan would provide both short and long-term improvement uh, plans for the plant. Um, the plan would also help with regulatory compliance. And one of the, one of the biggest ones for um, public work staff, I think moving forward and this entire community would be the um, capital improvement schedule. Um, this is a aging infrastructure, um, aging plant. It it's not getting any newer, we're not getting any smaller, so um, capital improvement is, it would be a huge one uh, with this plan. So um, another big one uh, with a plan in place, uh, we would be eligible uh, for grant funding as well. So a big one for us. Um, this uh, would be also a huge win for the city with teaming up uh, with both Windsor and uh, Jacobs, two engineering firms that are um, very talented when it comes to uh, wastewater engineering, uh, environment engineering. So um, that's kind of a it's a big one for us. The the fact that Jacobs has been running that plant for thirty-plus years, um, and then Windsor's staff as well. Um, so um, staff recommendation would be to authorize the city manager to sign a professional service contract with Windsor Engineers to complete a wastewater facility plan. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Adam. Grant?
Do you know what the grant pipeline looks like? The financial grant pipeline looks like for um, these wastewater treatment plants? Is that ideally if we complete this plan, spell us my own's plan, we'd want to be successful in attracting these grants?
Sure.
Hello, all Haley Ellitt Management Analysts for the city, and I do a lot of grants, as you all know. Um, so a big thing for grants is they want to see that you have that plan in place.
Yep.
So that's the main push for it is just to actually have it, the specific project, the prioritization is helpful within that plan. But as I'm doing grant writing, the fact that we have a plan puts us that much more competitive for a number of state, federal, even regional. Does that help you?
Oh, yeah. Do you do you know offhand how many grants or the size of the grants that are would be available to us if we had this plan in place?
I don't know. They'll probably be a lot more project-specific, whether it's a pump or a building, whether that's a USDA or an ETO or some sort of Department of Energy. Those, it would be a lot of thinking of what could be the best option for that and if there's any sort of grants that we can put together.
Okay.
I I think this is for you, Haley. Do do we need to finish phase two before you can really be efficient grant writing or or in in the twenty-three, twenty-four with the output of this study in this fiscal year allow us to start applying? I guess that's the question.
I would say probably both. As long as we have started the process, I can write that into the grant that we have started this. We expect it to be complete by this date. We can provide you a copy of our completed plan because typically grant cycles are late as well. So if we don't have it at the beginning, but we show that we are moving towards having it, they could take that into account.
If I could add to those comments, thank you, Haley. Uh, I want to note that our wastewater treatment plant is our biggest energy user as a city. So as we think about uh, accomplishing the goals of the um, energy plan, I I think that that will be an important piece and some of this might be ETO or Department of Energy helping us make the plan for some of the identified projects um, in a way that makes them more efficient. So it's not uh, not just about the aging facility, but also opportunities to be more efficient and and find some energy savings. So um, at any point, we'll be able to plug this in. Thank you.
Meg?
With that comment, say, um, I hadn't really thought about it, but it is a great opportunity. Is that um, like that overlay or that viewpoint represented in the scope of work or is that just something that staff's going to have to keep remembering for the next few years?
A little bit of both. So this is a lot more infrastructure-based, so it'll be included as we think of the pump replacements and things like that, that could have an energy component. But energy in general, in terms of like solar, wouldn't be included in something like this. That's much more infrastructure building-based.
Okay, yeah, I just want to make sure we don't lose that lens of as as you're looking at projects and those upgrades, you know, how do you make it efficient within within the goal of obviously a functional, long-term plant?
And that is where my like, energy. And that is where my like energy update lens ties into it. So it's still on my radar.
So just relying on you to stay.
Yes.
Alright.
I move.
What's next? You're ready? Gladys got it, Gladys got it, go woman.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign a professional services contract to link $312,000 over a two-year period with Windsor engineers to create a wastewater treatment plant facility plan.
I will second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Hi.
Opposed, Chair of Time Motion passes, thank you Adam.
Thank you.
You're three for three. Uh, next item is, uh, waterfront storm water relocation project update by our Rand. How do I say?
Oxer.
Oxer, dang it, okay.
Thanks, man, so. Yeah, my name is Randy Oxiger, I'm the project manager for the city of Hood River. Um, I'm here to introduce, uh, Tetra Tech. Um, had three representatives to, to on Zoom. Uh, one in person, so they give enough, so that they can give an update to the project. Um, but before we start, I just wanted to point out that there is an amendment on page 53 of your, uh, your packet. Just kind of want to touch on that before their, uh, their presentation. This, uh, amendment, uh, covers the value engineering for the downtown area and a fairly substantial sum for construction services. Um, construction services are actually called out by our funders that the engineered record be uh, the one to do the inspection, so that, that is a reason for that portion of the amendment. The staff has reviewed the amendment and, uh, we do recommend that you authorize city manager to, uh, to sign, sign that amendment. Um, but with, and then before we go too much, I'd just like to have a Tom Wilcox come up. Um, and then, uh, on the phone, we have Matt Huxley. Uh, Tom is the Assistant Project Manager and Matt Huxley is the Senior Project Manager on the project. I'd like to be able to have them say a few words.
Thank you, thank you Randy.
Good evening, um, my name's Tom Wilcox, I'm the city manager at Tetra Tech. Here to support the project and, uh, provide our commitment to the city in terms of getting this project completed. I've recently just started with Tetra Tech about three months, so Matt will be able to ask, answer, um, and more of the technical questions. Um, but being that, um, I have a history going back almost 20 years, working on various projects for the city. Going back to 2003, the water lines, uh, pump stations. Um, first street, a lot of different projects in the community. So really when, when I'm, uh, now a part of the team, it's really for um, project delivery at this point, make sure that we get our projects completed on time, on budget and get those going. So, um, really I'm here, answer questions that I can, but Matt's really the technical lead and he'll, he'll be able to provide the update.
Thank you.
Matt, I see you're off mute, are you fixing?
Yeah, th- thanks Randy, um, can everyone hear me okay?
Yeah, yes.
Great, thank you, alright, yeah, thanks again Randy and thank you, um, councillors again for giving us the opportunity to give you a quick update on the project and, um, present the amendment request. So I'm going to share my screen and just, um, bring up a presentation here that we put together. Um, hopefully you can see this. Uh, let's see. Uh, let's see, there we go.
Yes, I see your screen, I see your screen now.
Okay, fantastic. Um, so this is a project that was started back in 2020. Um, just a quick overview of the project, this is a lead in here. So, um, the ultimate reason for this project is to, um, bypass this failing storm trunk line on the waterfront property. Um, and by doing so, uh, we would install about 3,500 feet of new storm line, uh, mostly in Riverside Drive down north Eighth Street and then follow up with a new storm drain outfall into the Columbia River. Uh, just west of the waterfront park. Um, another big part of this project is treating a significant portion of stormwater that's originating from the downtown business district. Um, currently, it's about a 26 acre area that discharges untreated stormwater into the wetland between the railroad, Union Pacific Railroad and the ID4 freeway. Um, that water then overflows from the wetland into culverts underneath the freeway that then connect into the, um, existing storm trunk line in the waterfront area. Um, a major reason for providing this treatment is one, to provide, to meet the funding agency requirements, which is DEQ. But also to, uh, plan for future municipal stormwater MS4 permit requirements that will be in effect once the city's population reaches 10,000 people, so we're, we're approaching that point now. Um, and it was always intended that this project be constructed in four successive phases. Um, phase one installed new storm drain in Riverside Drive and up north Eighth Street. Uh, bypassed a portion of storm drain line under Hood River Distillers. And then we plugged the storm drain line under Hood River Distillers with, with essentially, uh, lightweight concrete. So there's no way to remove the pipelines, so the best way to abandon it was to fill it with concrete. Um, phase two will install the new outfall just west of the waterfront park and then connect into the phase one piping. And this was originally envisioned as being the, the final phase, phase four. But the reason we're doing this is the second phase is because the outfall portion in the river can only be installed during the in-water work window, which extends from middle of November to the middle of March. Um, we're, we're absolutely, absolutely committed to getting this phase of the project done within this next in-water work window, which is rapidly approaching. Um, phase three will be installing all of the distributed, um, treatment facilities downtown. Um, and just to make clear that these are, for the most part, vegetated facilities, they'll be installed in the public right-of-way. Um, with, um, handful of them will be installed on private property, uh, mostly on the Wakuma property. Um, just, uh, north side of Wasco Street. Um, all of this water after it's been treated will continue to be discharged to the wetland. But instead of going under the freeway into the existing trunk line, it will be redirected to the west and then out into the river via an existing outfall, uh, approximately where this arrow is. Um, just west of the wastewater treatment plant. And we'll also be restoring and enhancing the wetland between the freeway and the railroad. And we will abandon in place, um, the existing storm trunk line underneath the treatment plant. And as it heads north under the Port of Hood of a warehouse building. Um, this is originally phase two, but we made it phase three, just so we can do the outfall work first. And then phase four is, um, the final phase of the project, uh, new storm piping currently planned to be installed in Riverside Drive and then anchorway. Um, taking stormwater from Hood River Juice and Shepherds and then taking this out to the new outfall. Uh, so those are the four phases, current four phases, and then just a quick update on the status. Um, phase one was completed, uh, back in 2020, fall, no, uh, winter 2021. Um, phase two design is completed, it's currently being reviewed by the funding agency and will be advertising for bids, um, as soon as they give us their approval, which will hopefully be this month. And like I say, the intent is to get that pipe in place, uh, within the in-water work window. Um, phase three will be advertised as soon as, as soon as we have secured a couple of easements. So that is forthcoming, we anticipate to advertise this, uh, this fall. Then complete it through next year and then final completion, uh, winter of 2024. And then, uh, phase four is anticipated to be constructed in the spring of 2024 and then again completion by the end of next year. Um, so that's a quick update on the, just an overview of the project and this, and the project status. And we are requesting an amendment. And this amendment, like Randy says, is to cover mostly some additional construction services that the funding agencies requesting we provide. Um, primarily additional full-time inspection. Um, we do have some construction services within our original contract amount and what we're requesting, um, is not duplicate, it's just additional inspection. Um, and some specialty inspection to which we believe is necessary, um, specifically geotechnical inspection and some structural. Uh, most of this work will be performed by our sub consultants, including AKS formerly Tennyson, based out of the DOWs. Um, they can be at the site within, within minutes. Um, another portion of this, this amendment, as, as, um, as Randy pointed out, is to just do a little bit of additional hydrologic modeling on the proposed, uh, distributor stormwater facilities, facilities downtown. Um, currently, there's approximately 50 of these. Um, this number's bounced around a bit, one time it was intended to be 60, it's been cut back to 50. Um, we think with this some additional VE, we can reduce that number further, um, and, uh, free up some real estate in the street. Potentially give back some parking spaces. And at the same time, still meet the water quality goals, both of the project and for the future MS4 requirements. Um, so that's really the bulk of the amendment request. Um, like I say, we're committed to getting this project done, we want to get it done as soon as possible. Uh, we know this has been ongoing for a long time and, um, we fully support this project and just want to get it done. Uh, so with that, I'll turn it back to Randy and questions?
Thank you, Matt.
So let's stop sharing.
What's next, Randy?
It's all I have, uh, waiting for questions.
Great, thank you. Questions for the team? Grant? Megan?
Uh, I've got a few and I'm going to jump around because there's a bunch of things. But, um, I guess, oh, first one, um, you know, phase two, the outfall, um, great in-water work window, we're going to meet it, but I think it was originally phase four in part because we didn't want to run all the water through it, is that, was that correct? Or is there any risk of, we're obviously, it's going to be way more flow through it until we do the downtown area out of that pipeline? Does that change the specs or the risk factor or anything?
It, it doesn't, and that's a great question. Um, no, we, and we've, we've modeled this, we've updated our calculations and we've confirmed that the new outfall piping will have capacity to take all the water that's coming from downtown. Um, one thing I forgot to mention or should have mentioned is that during phase one, we installed this temporary bypass. So right now, water is flowing, continues to flow under the freeway into the bypass and then into the new piping and then back into the, the existing piping on the treatment plant. Um, this pipe is surcharging, which means it's basically full and that's okay in the temporary condition. Um, again, we've modeled this, it has the capacity, it's not something that we want to keep, um, in, in the long term and obviously another reason why we want to do this as quickly as possible. But ultimately, you know, um, it's not an issue as far as the, the capacity of the new outfalls concerned. So, um, we, we can make, we can do the outfalls phase two and still convey all of the flow from downtown through the new outfall.
Okay.
But great, great question.
Tim, I see you've raised your hands, I got you, Mary, Megan, carry on.
Okay, um, then, um, kind of big picture. I mean, I assume they're set standards for what we can release for water quality for DEQ and that's the metric we're using to measure success for this, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
But, uh, correct, yes.
Sorry, and then, um, within that, are there standard specs for, um, you know, what these treatment facility, whether it's the, you know, actual vegetated inflow things, or I think it was the scrub brush or whatever the really mechanical one is, like, there's, there's standard specs for, if you're modeling, um, you know, oh, the drainage area is this, here's the 100 or 500 year flood event, so this is the flow amount. This is the infiltration rate of the soil type, like, are, that's all, is that how this is designed? Or, or how do you come up with how many, how many, um, you know, there's 50 or 60 or less?
Right.
Places where you're doing this and, and how do you measure or model that it will be successful?
Yeah, no, another great question. So, so yes, there are design standards that govern the treatment requirements and they're established both by city standards. Uh, we have our own requirements, but then also DEQ. Um, should point out that DEQ standards are actually, um, a little bit more stringent than city standards, which is another reason why we're applying the DEQ standards. So for example, the volume of water that needs to be treated is, is higher than what the city standards dictate. Um, and then in addition to treatment, um, you mentioned, um, I think 100 year, 500 year storm events. So, um, these facilities also have to be able to, to bypass any storm event in ex, in excess of what's required for treatment and bypass it back into the storm system without damaging each of the individual, uh, treatment facilities. So that's been incorporated into the design as well. Um, there's a combination of vegetated treatment and what I think you're referring to is mechanical. Um, we, we, we do have several, uh, cartridge filter vaults in the design. Um, you know, we've looked at doing, uh, vegetated treatment at those locations, but the area requirement significantly higher. And then several of these are on the Wakuma properties, so we, we, what we're trying to do is avoid the extent of impact of both uh, the Wakuma building, um, also minimize extent of easements required. So in some cases, it actually makes more sense to use these quote unquote mechanical treatment facilities. Um, our goal is to minimize them as, as to the extent possible, but it's a bit of a, it's a bit of a trade-off between cost and, and impact of private property. Um, but I will say that the, the bulk of these facilities are intended to be, uh, vegetated. Um, in some cases, we're also having to use facilities that will have proprietary media. Again, that's just because of the, the space constraints in the public right-of-way. Um, specifically at the north end is the, the basin, um, along Industrial Street. So, but, um, the goal has always been to use these, these LID facilities to the extent possible.
All right, can you clarify on Industrial Street, what is being used?
So right now, we're looking at a combination of, um, traditional vegetated facilities and proprietary, um, uh, vegetated systems, but with proprietary media. And the reason we're doing that is because that proprietary media has, the facility has a much, much smaller footprint because it can treat the same volume of water, but in a much, much smaller space. Um, and the reason we're looking at that is because they're the only, the facilities that will physically fit within the, the space that's available um, on Industrial Street. So it's a mix of planted systems, um, a couple of them, uh, are not planted, they're actually vaults. But instead of cartridges in the vaults, they actually have, um, a, um, a soil media mix with a mulch topping. So the reason we chose that, again, like I said, is to minimize the amount of area that we need, but also potentially, um, to, to recover some parking spaces, because you know that's a critical issue as well. Um, but ultimately, it's just trying to meet the water quality goals within the space that we have available. Um, and also not having to take an additional private property and require additional private easements from private property owners.
Uh, I think the last one for now, and it sounds like the number is not totally finalized, but at this point in the design, how many parking spaces are impacted?
So right now, about 19.
Okay. And that was, that's lower than when we saw, I, I can't remember, but.
Right, right, right.
Okay, uh, I'll move on, let Tim go.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, man.
Thank you, um, can you guys hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Good. Um, I guess my question is for Randy. Randy? Um, as the project manager, um, can you tell us how much, uh, funds have been expended today?
I'm going to, in the range of 1.2, I'm going to not get you the, and, uh, without looking, without looking. I can find, I find, I don't think I carried that up with me, but.
So are there deliverables associated with the 1.2 roughly a million dollars?
I think Abigail's looking some stuff up.
Yeah, to give me just a minute, Haley provided me some information this afternoon, um, give me a minute to look for that.
And I guess, when you're doing that, I guess I'm looking for the status of the deliverables so far.
Thank you councillor for the question. Uh, let's see here. I can just go quickly through the amendments, I believe the total, um, current contract total is That includes, uh, amendments, um, one through seven. That includes uh amendments um one through seven. And so I know this would be helpful, I can just walk through, and I'll come stand next to Randy so he can look at the same material. Randy, let me know if I'm uh speaking out of turn here. But uh, the original project design base was six hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight, uh, which included um preliminary and final design services. I think much of that has been delivered. Archaeological monitoring was amendment number one. I believe that has been uh delivered with the Haley, please, you know, speak if I am out of turn again. Uh, amendment number two is geotechnical field and uh field investigations and scour analysis. That was for nineteen thousand or almost twenty thousand. I believe that's been delivered. Uh, amendment number three, which was a project management preliminary uh preliminary design, uh field investigations and permitting.
All the permitting has been completed.
Project management continues.
But yeah, I think it picks up again in amendment five, so I believe that that project management has been delivered.
Great, thank you. Project number, uh amendment number four was a phase two update and additional needs supplemental survey and geotechnical uh field investigations. I believe that's been for the most part delivered. Uh, and then um amendment number five was the largest one, that was the um phase two update and final design, project management, field investigation coordinate, utility coordination, um property owner coordination and bidding assistant. This was really when we like changed the the um design, right? We had gone from mechanical to distributed um form, and I believe much of this is still underway.
Much of it is underway, correct. Final design is is being worked on. Field investigation, Matt, uh, we have, we've done, done all the field investigations on.
Correct.
Utility coordination has been done. There will be a bit of additional um with some of the new layout, there will be some some additional utility coordination on that. And the property owner coordination has been done in the downtown area. We are still working on easements with the Wakoma building and um the existing properties along Riverside Drive that are affected. We are still in the process of reaching out to them. And bidding assistance, we're in the uh process of of that.
Amendment number six was uh for eighty-eight hundred dollars, that was an environmental assessment uh that was required. I think that's completed or underway. Uh, and then amendment number seven was, I didn't have any dollars, it was a timing, um, if I remember correctly, and that was connected to ARPA contracts.
Yeah, it was a clause that that ARPA require funders required, um, it's not a monetary thing, but they had to write the clause into the into the contract so that our funders were satisfied.
Does that answer the question, counselor?
Um, yeah, I guess my follow-up question is, I guess, Tetra Tech.
Okay.
Uh, especially with respect to amendment number five. Um, given that most of the funds have been expended, um, how, what's your plan for uh finishing up that task?
Um, it's it's almost finished, counselor. So it's it's just, we'd like to do this VE just to essentially see if there's any of these proposed um LID facilities that we could potentially remove at this time and potentially reduce the construction cost. So the amount of actual design effort to finish the 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 work that was included in amendment five is minimal.
Is there any way that you can share the, that, I mean, in respect to like the plan and the design and and where is, what's gonna go where? And what's being eliminated?
Yeah, um, well, first we need to get through the VE to know what we could potentially take out, but in terms of sharing the plans, that's really up to you, Randy and and city staff. Um, I'm I'm happy to do so if you are, so. Yep.
Yeah, I'd be happy to to get those together and share. I don't have them with me now, but.
Yeah, I think that that would help us.
Sure.
Understand better about, you know, how this project is about.
Sure, sure, sure. Um, one one comment on the the centralized facility, um, you know, when this project is originally scoped, the intent was to meet the water quality standards at the I would say the most um, um, I wouldn't say the lowest cost, but aware of the cost, so we looked at essentially just doing one facility. And we looked at different kinds, um, uh, constructed wetland down there on the east side of Wetland A. Uh, we looked at a full mechanical system, cartridges, pumps, the whole thing. And then we also looked at a centralized vegetated facility. And looked great on paper, and we started doing final design and realized there were some several shortcomings. Um, mostly impacts during construction would have required significant um uh lane closure on on the freeway, which good luck getting that done through ODOT, and but more importantly, it would be very, very difficult to maintain a facility at that location. So at that time, um, we and our partners looked at the distributed system um at that time, and we still think that that's the way to go. Not only are you constructing facilities downtown where they are accessible to maintain, but it's also downtown beautification. I mean, there's dual purposes, meeting water quality standards, but also providing a visual function and it just uh, increasing the appeal of downtown. So I stand by that decision. Um, I think it was, I think it's the right thing to do, and I think it supports the city's goals in the long term. Um, having having said that, it's much more complicated design because instead of designing one facility, we're designing forty-seven to fifty. Even though they're much smaller, there's still a lot of detailing that goes into that work and modeling that has to be done, so um. Yeah, and I I'm fully aware of the number, the, you know, I know it's 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 a hard pill to swallow when you look at all these amendments and the ultimate construction costs, but um, we're committed to trying to get this job done as quickly as possible with minimal amount of reworking.
Thank you. Those are the questions that I have for right now. Thanks, Randy.
No, it's nothing to do with the visibility. Like, did you have a question? I didn't quite get that. Go ahead, Mark. Making eyes, motor self, making eyes.
Um, in the in the packet, it talks about phase two, which I think is what you now call phase three, Matt. Is that, is that true?
Um, I'm not sure what's in the packet, and I apologize for not reviewing before the meeting.
Your letter to Randy talking about um requesting the the amendment. Um, and it says phase two construction services, and I think we're talking about phase three.
Um, no, we're talking about the current phase two that used to be phase four. So phase two, I don't know if you can still see the graphics I'm sharing here.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so this is phase two in in dark blue, so this is the extension of the new storm drain up north, Eighth Street. Uh, the red is where we finish, the red is phase one, so it's continuing the storm drain up north, Eighth Street, across Riverside Drive, and then um out into the river, the new outfall. So the additional construction services are purely for this part because this is what we're advertising for construction right now. So we can meet the in-water work window, that's that's coming up.
So so both, so the bulk of the amendments are are related to this outfall work. Um, and and amendment five, which was the uh large one, uh Randy, you mentioned Riverside Drive permissions and blah, blah, blah. So when when we came into this, I thought we were almost talking exclusively about the um, the infiltration part, which is now called phase three, so.
And and I want to just interject, I apologize for the phasing thing, it is, we internally, we 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 need to change the names to start addressing
Yep.
The locations, I believe.
Got it. So we're really looking at the pan project here, the, right? So um, some of some of the monies here include the Riverside Drive and which is phase four and uh, and do let us get into the water in this this winter for phase two and as well as the um the LID resources in phase, what's now phase three, is is, do I have it right? So I, in in preparing for the meeting, I was trying to tease out why the uh, you know, south of the freeway stuff was getting so expensive. Then, and and I think what part of the answer is, is we're not you know, I I was looking at a subset of of what this work reflects. Um, uh, like i- is that, is that true? So we've been talking, you've been talking about cost for the the whole stormwater management.
Correct, yeah, yeah, this includes, now, this includes everything. There will be additional work coming on the Riverside Drive portion of it. Those plans are not very far along there essentially. And this wasn't intending to bring this up, but it's kind of got brought up, but there, so this won't be the entirety, there will probably be one more, another, another expected amendment for the Riverside Drive portion of this.
Which is
Project.
Phase four um kind of stuff.
The, the, yes, sorry.
Just um, that one thing, do you mind if I jump in? Um, wouldn't, I mean, I originally phase four was one of the base phases in the in the base contract without the amendments, is that not covered under that? Why would it need an amendment?
So I'd like Matt to address this a little bit, but um, it is based on, so pretty good time for Matt to jump, but so all of this predates me, so so I've but from my understanding, Bell Design was city engineer at the time this was proposed. Um, phase, the the Riverside Drive portion of this is still based on the Bell thirty percent design. There is still a fair amount of work to bring that to final, to to those to final. Um, Matt, is that a good enough introduction that I'll let you take?
Yeah, and ju- just to clarify what we're talking about here, Riverside Drive, and again, I apologize the the phasing, like I said, here, it's a little bit confusing. Um, so Riverside Drive and just to just to clarify, Randy, we're talking about Riverside Drive East, right? East of phase one?
Correct.
Yes.
The Shepherd's Building.
The Shepherd's Building, Hood River Juice, correct, yeah. So this is originally part of the base contract um as phase three. And now it will be the final phase, phase four. Um, this this purple piping along here, and this is what was originally in the thirty percent design. Um, since then, and the thirty percent design was predicated on Hood River Juice and Shepherds having to reconstruct a significant amount of their onsite storm system. And the reason for that is because all of the new piping is about ten feet higher than the existing trunk line. Um, Hood River Juice and Shepherd's storm systems discharge into the existing trunk line um at that depth. So in order for, in order to build the storm drain line Riverside Drive and convey all of the Hood River Juice and Shepherd's storm water to the west, they would have to raise all of their piping by about ten feet. Um, we understand that that's a difficult pill for them to swallow, it's a huge ask. So one thing we would like to look at is um, a possibility of of serving of taking all of the stormwater from Hood River Juice and Shepherds and taking it out to the east. There's an outfall to the east out here by the by the by the boat basin, by the basin out here, that's not shown on this this figure. Um, it's it's shallower, but um if we can do that, then the amount of reconstruction that Hood River, Hood River Juice and Shepherds would have to do would be fairly minimal, if anything. Um, so really the intent here is is to bring them on board and also potentially save the city a bit of money too, because the amount of pipe we'd have to install in in the right of way would be slightly shorter. Um, this is something that we we noticed um not that long ago, attention's been focused on the the preceding phases. But we think there's some merit to at least looking at this. Um, I think it would be much more amenable to the to Hood River Juice and to Shepherds.
Jim, I see your hand. Mark, you started.
Yeah, I guess I have a question about uh the quality of the water coming out of those.
Hey, hold, sorry, hold on a sec. So, Tim, I see your hand. Mark, you were talking to Randy. Matt gave an explanation that involved an east outfall. You want to keep this line of going for a minute, Mark?
So I I guess um, two two last little bits for me right now. Uh, one is uh, per Tim's question, I I would like to see the basically before and after of the downtown uh thing because because that's what, you know, we we've heard some about and 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 we'd like to, you know, I'm a fan of that design concept and I I want to see it be successful, so understanding from, you know, what was presented to us a year and a half ago and what's, what's the actual plan would be uh uh very interesting.
Sure.
Uh, two, and and I think this is for Matt, is it, I have it, um, I find it hard to believe that the construction services uh elements that you're asking for an increase for uh weren't part of an original thing. I mean, the phase two pipe hasn't, it's it's like the one piece that stayed the same through this whole uh thing, or it seems to me anyway.
Sure.
Maybe you could explain why you need more.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I'd be happy to do so, and thanks again, it's a great question. So we, we did include some construction services in our original contract, um, but not the full suite of services that we would normally provide. Um, again, we wanted to meet a budget that was acceptable to the city manager at the time. Um, and we'd agreed with Bell Design that they would take on, do more of the work that the consultant would typically do, so that would include inspection. Um, and also attending the pre-bid meeting in person. Um, since then, you know, Bell Designs along with the city engineer, and we understand that um, one, we need to attend the pre-bid meeting in person. And then secondly, uh, the funding agencies specifically request, I know they're requesting requiring the engineer of record, which is Tetra Tech, to provide all of the inspection. So um, that that's the main reason that we're coming to you for an amendment request for construction services. Um, and the amount for the construction inspection is really based on an estimate what we think would be needed, and it's, we're looking at a full-time inspector half of the time, um, which is fairly typical. Um, it may end up being less than that, you get a good contractor, you don't need as much oversight, so. Um, yeah, so those two hundred and forty hours in the for the construction inspections essentially, you know, it's 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 an estimate, like I said, of an expect expected construction duration and then halftime inspection during that timeframe. Um, and
And this is a pool of hours versus a not to exceed or something like that.
That's correct, yep, it's it's T-NAM, time and materials. Um, we're using a blended rate based on um Tennyson, formerly Tennyson, the AKS now, we're hiring them to be the inspector, we'd like to hire them to be the inspector because they're based in the Dalles. The fifteen minutes drive away. So, yeah, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I I guess then the question is, you know, I I understood the answer is, there's a change of scope from your perspective, and so you're quoting the fill-in fill. Uh, so from the city's perspective, or was that uh, it's a change of scope that we requested for them to take.
This is, I actually requested this from from Matt um on a standard, one of our standard capital jobs. I do the inspections. The funders, we found out a few weeks ago, the funders, part of their requirement is the engineer of record to do the inspection. And then on top of that, um, the abandonment work under the, under the current building there is by far probably the the most difficult portion of this whole project. So in, I know that Matt had added the geotech for that portion and I mean, to be frank, I need the the extra help to to make sure it's done correctly. It's the most critical portion, so.
I'm not questioning that.
No, no, no.
Okay, that that was it for me.
There's a, I have a question about the uh quality of the water coming out the outfalls. Uh, the one on the screen right now discharges into the river just west of a very popular swimming beach. Is there any cause for concern there?
Uh, not for me specifically. Um, and again, you know, the water that's coming out of that pipe will be treated. Um, you know, I think in the interim, um it's it's something that should, you know, it it's hard to give a definitive answer, I guess, we'd have to be looking at, you know, what is it we're specifically concerned about. Um, right now, you've got untreated water that's coming out the outfall here to the west. Um, I know that the proposed outfall is closer to the park. Um, typically, you're not gonna have the same kind of constituents that you'd have saying wastewater effluent, like fecal coliforms, for example. Um, you know, human fecal coliform should not be present in any noticeable, detectable quantity coming out of a storm outfall. Um, I won't say there won't be any constituents because there will be a period of time when that water is not treated. So that needs to be recognized, and that's a really good question. Um, I know this, I know there's eddy currents around the waterfront park here too, hence the reason for moving the wastewater treatment plant outfall. Um, I know there's, I know there's eddy currents around the waterfront park here too, hence the reason for moving the wastewater treatment plant outfall.
Yep, and I guess the same question for the, the proposed uh, the potential. Shunting of the water into Nichols Basin.
Right, right, and that would be, so. Um, so that water would, would be, can, most of the water that would go to Nichols Basin would be coming from Hood River Juice and Shepherds. And they, they actually treat the water right now. Um, now we do need to confirm that their existing treatment meets the required treatment standards. Because if they're built to city standards, they're not going to meet the DEQ standards.
Right.
So that's something that we're, we're, those are some questions that we're trying to get answers to from the, the building owners.
Yeah.
Um, but certainly, you know. Um, I mean, well, like I said, I mean, the bulk of the water is already treated, we just need to know if it meets the current treatment standards. But certainly to a higher quality than what would be going out of this new outfall, at least in the interim. Um, I will point out that um. You know, most of the year, at least during the, I, I imagine during the hot summer months during the swimming season, there's going to be very little storm flow coming down this pipe. I mean, it just doesn't rain for three months. And then during the cold, wet weather season, you know, there'd be, I mean, I know there's some recreation uses out here, you know, windsurfers and what have you. But um, but tha- that's another reason, I get back to the schedule, I mean, that's another reason why we want to do the next phase, Phase Three. Almost concurrently with, with this, the outfall phase, we just start the outfall phase sooner and finish it sooner. But the intent is that we would construct all of the downtown BMPs next, you know, next summer before and after the, the, the construction moratorium downtown.
Yeah, we have a lot, a lot of people swim in Nichols Basin and very popular water recreation area.
Oh, absolutely.
It would be really, really important to make sure that that water. Is treated to the, probably, I would say even more than. The key standards. You know, children down there. Well, yeah, we have children down there.
Understood, yeah, absolutely, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for the concern.
Um, no other councillors have taken some questions. Um. I am very curious about your proposed change or alterations that you'd mentioned earlier to the Phase Four part of the project. Um, the future alterations or amendments you're proposing on current structure that we had in place. Um, the only other question that hasn't already been answered was you mentioned the proprietary media going into the sewer treatment. Areas in downtown. Uh, is there any change to the maintenance costs or accessibility or need? Uh, in those areas, uh, si- since it's a proprietary fill, I assume that that source company. Would have certain parameters or not necessarily give it away for free. So.
No, that's a great question. Um, and absolutely, um, there'll be some differences. Uh, the proprietary media is, like you say, owned by the company that supplies it, so you'd have to purchase that media from them. Um, however, the volume you would need would be less than, say, um, you know, traditional custom-designed treatment facility. Just because you don't need nearly as much of that media to achieve the same treatment requirements. Um, and then ongoing routine inspection and cleaning is no different than what you would need for a, a standard um vegetated system. In fact, it's probably going to be less because again, just the physical size of these, these proprietary facilities are a lot smaller. Um, a lot of the cost is actually in the, the, the concrete, you know, they, they, they come installed in precast concrete units. Um. But ultimately, um, there shouldn't be any significant cost, and, and we can certainly crunch the numbers. Um, I will say, you know, if we could do this with traditional in-street vegetated gardens, we would. It's just, we just don't have the right of way down there in those, those areas where we're posing to install them, um, specifically on industrial street.
Yeah, I understand. Uh, if, does this proprietary medium need to be replaced on a regular basis?
It does. Um, I wouldn't say regular, about every ten years is what they recommend.
And how stable, if it's a proprietary medium? And we have to get it from a single source, and we've already installed all these things, uh, how can we reliably expect this single source? To provide us this medium at a reasonable cost for an ongoing indefinite basis?
So one thing we can, so, so there's actually, I say proprietary, there's actually two companies that manufacture what we need. So, so there's two components of the cost, right? There's the purchase cost, and this will be open bid, we're not, we're not selecting a particular one of the two right now. Um, we've designed the system so that either could be appropriate, but ultimately. The systems that will be, will be supplied will be the lowest construction cost. Um, in terms of ongoing maintenance, they're about the same. Um, they also offer training programs for um your own staff or whoever you contract this out to, whatever landscaping company. So then you're not paying this company to, to inspect them on a ma- on a regular basis, you're just doing that through your um ongoing. Landscaping contract that you'll set up for all of the other facilities. Um. And then in terms of the media replacement, um, they're somewhat interchangeable too. So I mean, it's possible that you could use a different company's media in future if there was a cheaper option available. Uh, and again, we're trying to minimize the number of these as possible so that the overall cost is not increased substantially. Um, but ultimately, we're trying to do this, we're trying to, well, we need to meet the water quality standards, there just isn't any way around it. And we have to, so, you know, we've looked at different systems and ultimately. This is really the only system that would work. Um, other than cartridges, that's the other option you could do is cartridges, but we really. Want to avoid doing cartridge vaults to the extent possible.
You discussed that earlier. Alright, thanks.
Thank you. Similar to councillor Poulsen, uh, overall, I feel like I'm concerned, right? I, I continue to see that there's increase in pricing, you know, one point two was the original ask. Uh, a little under one point two, uh, one, one point three, and now it's almost one point four. Hearing about potential maintenance that's going to happen, can you be very clear about how much additional funding is going to be needed? So that we can ensure we're being good stewards of these dollars, that all this work is happening. Uh, in a timely manner, and that we can predict how much more funding are we going to need to complete these projects? And to ensure that maintenance is taking place.
Um, not sure I quite understand the question. Are you referring to the design fee or construction or ongoing maintenance or all?
Yeah, so here we have a contract fee summary in front of us, and the numbers just continue to rise. We checked earlier and the original contract was for one point two six nine million dollars, and now it's. Amendment number eight would bring us to one point three eight eight, and it sounds like there's additional cost. I think what I would like is just clarity on how much additional funding is this going to cost us? Including some of the factors that councillor Poulsen brought up around the maintenance and. Ensuring that in ten years from now, we have appropriate funds allocated to these efforts. Does that clarify it for you?
It, it does. I'm not sure if I can really address the maintenance costs, you know, right now. Um, we're scoped to just do the design and the, the construction support. Um, I don't know, Brandy, is, is that a question you can maybe address on the, the future maintenance?
I do not have costs for future maintenance.
Okay.
The future maintenance costs are, are relatively static, um, minus the, the mechanical.
Yeah.
Um, which, which I think we can get, get some numbers.
Oh, absolutely, yeah, yeah, we can provide those numbers.
Yeah, but as far as for the um, the rain levels themselves, that's, that's a static cost that, that we as staff can, can work on, but.
Thank you.
So the actual question before us tonight is about Amendment Eight. Just to be clear, there's, there's a very large scope discussion here. Um, and I think a big purpose of tonight was to. Hadn't he- heard directly from Tetra Tech recently and get an, an update of kind of where things are at. I know that there's been change in personnel on our side and your side and. Uh, you know, we want the rainwater to go into the river in the right way. Does sound to me like there's considerable uncertainty beyond Amendment Eight. I didn't realize we were imagining perhaps having a subsequent phase into Nichols Basin, that's, of course, I've heard of that, but.
Right.
Um, could maybe Abigail or Ran- Randy help me understand, like. We're talking about making an adjustment at this stage in the middle of a project that is. Ongoing, it, it be- beyond Phase Four. I mean, with the, the, the solving, solving this, the shallow depth problem at Shepherd's and Ryan's Juice, that's. At least Phase Five, I mean, or is that included in one of the phases that I see before me?
That is included in the, the Phase Four work. Um. That, 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 that's in the outline for, as far as scheduling goes, it's still on schedule. I mean, one of the. One of the key components of this is to remove that pipeline that goes underneath. The, uh, the building on Hood River Juice as well, which is in Phase Four.
It's, it's in, just so I understand correctly, it's in Phase Four, but we would. Be requested to have another amendment to provide additional funds to complete Phase Four, correct?
Correct. Um, it, Phase Four, if Matt could speak to that again, um.
Yeah.
The, the, with the Bell Design. Uh, it's a Bell Design background, I'd prefer Matt.
Yeah, so, so what we're seeing right now is Phase Four as it was originally um conceptualized by Bell Design. So that's what this purple line is, it's building the storm line along Riverside Drive. Ten feet higher than the existing storm line, which is this dash green line. Um, and then also the storm drain line on Anchor Way, which would pick up runoff from Hood River Juice. Take it south on Anchor Way, and then this section on Riverside Drive would pick up the runoff from Shepherds. And then take this out to the west, and then they would connect into the, the Phase One piping. However, in order for this to work, it would require Hood River Juice and Shepherds to raise all of their storm, storm piping. Um, you know, when we scoped this originally back in twenty twenty with Bell Design, um. You know, they, they, they gave us the, the indication that that was a done deal, like they'd been in discussion with the building owners and that they were on board of raising. Their storm piping. Um, and that's really been our understanding ever since that, um, you know, the concept that they came up would be, would be workable to all parties. It's only since then that we started looking at this in more detail as we're approaching the point where we need to start in on final design of Phase Four. That we realized that, that, that there may be some better opportunities for all parties, um. By not requiring Hood River Juice and Shepherds to redo all of their onsite storm system, and then. If we can take the storm water to the east, to Nichols Boat Basin instead, then it's a shorter length of pipe overall, so it's potentially lower cost to the city. So we, we think this, this will have benefit to the city, both in the long run, and essentially get this project done, um. As soon as possible. Um, like I said, if we, if we, if, if we're going to require that Hood River Juice and Shepherds raise their storm system. We don't know how committed they are to that. Um. I don't know if they'd be willing to do so, they've given some indications that that would be extremely expensive for them to do. So I think if we can prove that taking the storm water to the east instead, if we can prove that that's viable. There's a better option, and that should be more amenable to all parties.
Thank you.
So I do, um, really, really early phases of this, I do remember us discussing. The east pipe going to Nichols Boat Basin, and I do think a large part of why that didn't move forward was because Nichols Boat Basin for a good chunk of the year. Doesn't have any connection to the river and any, you know, water movement. Um.
Yeah.
And I certainly, we had a number of conversations about the cost to the individual property owners, and, and at that time, we're willing to. Take on the city's costs, which is already substantial, and make the property owners pay their share of it. Um, so I, I don't, uh, maybe this is for Abigail and Randy, of I, some level, this is maybe we should discuss it. As a council before Tetra Tech goes too far down this road. Because I don't want to add any more to this contract cost if we're going to get to the same conclusion we did four years ago.
I, I, I want to say that I recall that Will was working on a specific grant to, that was going to help them, and. I remember he applied for a couple, didn't receive one, but then he received another that would potentially help. You all recall something like that?
Um, so I think what you're referring to is a USDA grant, and at one point, we thought that we could get that, and we could use that to offset the cost that would be to them. We did go down that path, and they are very water sewer, storm water is not really in their repertoire. And it would have taken them a lot of work to even be eligible to potentially give us money if we were eligible. And so we decided to not pursue that route.
I, I clearly remember seeing Will's Excel sheets and like the, the table, so thanks.
Yeah, I might have been looking at an LID or something too, I, like, I, I agree, I remember some specific.
This grant, then it would be this much, if there was this one, it was going to be that much, and I don't remember those numbers. But I do remember there were specific grants that would help offset their expenses and things.
I, I, I agree with Megan that w- we shouldn't. We're, be spending hours on Phase Four, moving to, to Nichols until we have a good discussion. I have, I have a really funny engineering joke about something very similar, but I won't, I won't go into that here, so.
Okay. Uh, as I, as I often say, we have a motion. If someone would like to make it, there is, this is a very wide-ranging and very important discussion about a very important and expensive project. But uh, we do have a, the goal tonight is about Amendment Eight, so if we want to succeed at that, I would be open to hearing that motion.
I move that we authorize the city manager to sign Amendment Eight totaling one hundred and nine thousand four hundred forty-two dollars. With Tetra Tech for value engineering and construction services.
Moved by Megan.
Second.
Second by Grant. Further discussion?
One action item that we talked about was, um, and, and it doesn't impact the motion, but it is to get the. Uh, low-impact development design before and after stuff, so we can look at it prior to.
I have that noted. I, I think I, I can double check here, just two action items coming from tonight. One is, want to see a before and after of the downtown, like, probably as a map. Uh, um, piece, and then the second is to go back and research, uh, the previous conversations about Nichols Basin. Um, and then, uh, in consultation with Tetra Tech, bring that forward back as a conversation for council. Were there other action items?
There is cost, we were talking about costs and the maintenance, like how much is this going to cost?
Thank you, yeah, I wrote it down to since we're full, thank you.
Great. We're, we're in the discussion phase still. Any further discussion on this motion? All in favor?
Hi.
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 Opposed? Sheriff, I motion passes. Thank you, Randy, good job. Thanks, uh, thanks, Tom, for being here. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Back to. Uh, we're going to take a break for four minutes, and then we're going to come back and talk about inline hydro.
Hi Molly.
That's not what it says, just saying, I can read my agenda. Okay, Abigail, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you all, um. The hydro project began, um, I think really with council and a conversation in twenty nineteen. And then the contract was awarded to N Line in September of, I think of twenty twenty-one. Um, and at that time, the city hired, uh, John Grim, who is here with us in the front row, uh, as the project manager. Phase one included preliminary design, and that was completed, um, much earlier this year, and you might remember. Uh, that's when we authorized phase two, which had five critical, um, pieces, including easement. Uh, Pacific Power, um, agreement, other pieces. The last piece of that was the surge analysis, and so we've had many conversations about that in the last week, um, about those results. Um, though, the surge analysis showed a, I'm gonna just say greater than zero percent chance. Of, um, some risk to the city water supply, but I don't really have any quantitative to data tonight around that level of risk. So this is really just a conversation with you about this new information, um, and what, uh. You would like to, um, see going forward, if you want more additional information, um, what homework you want to kind of assign to us as your staff. Um, so that you can make an informed decision going forward, and then also just a, a conversation about, um, about. Risk and what, uh, elements of, uh, risk would you like us to research as well? So I come to basically with the question of how would you like to approach this topic? And, uh, what would you like us to research for a future conversation?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Who wants to start? Megan.
I think this will shock all of you, that I would like to go first, um. So yeah, I think the big overarching part of this is. Um, the, the standard of more, more than zero percent risk is, is a failure and means we shouldn't move forward is I. Don't think, and I've been around since the beginning of this, that's not something council had ever discussed or agreed to, um. I don't think it's an appropriate standard, because there is, there is literally no infrastructure and no design that would pass that test. Um, so if that was the test, we should have ended this four years ago, or we certainly wouldn't even have to have done the hammer test. Because we already would know it would fail, there was no scenario where that would pass, um. And so, so that's my baseline of like, I, I want to be looking at something that's more than zero percent risk. While also still being a low and reasonable amount of risk, because of course our water system's important, um. And, and I certainly don't want to be giving back money or canceling this project, or like telling the state we're out before we've actually had that conversation, um. And then I think in order to actually have a realistic conversation about what's an appropriate level of risk. Myself, and I, I assume all of council, it would be, we were. We think we need a lot more information to be able to have the language and the knowledge to talk about it. Um, and I have some ideas of that, but I'm gonna let other folks jump in.
Thank you, councillor.
Good timing, um, my understa- and not nearly a tenure that the other councillors have. Uh, in this project, um. Being briefed on it, uh, we would be sticking in the, um, turbine at a, as our sing- our single pipe. Uh, on the way down, um, if should that failed, then our entire water system. Would fail theoretically, um, I haven't seen, uh, the, the complete risk profile yet. However, I, uh, am interested in other ways to mitigate that risk, I don't want to have. Additional single points of failure in series upon a single line of essential infrastructure in our community. If there is a way to mitigate that, wonderful, um, but. Without having, I mean, that's, that's the same reason why the Challenger blew up was the O-rings in series, and they. Thought, thought that that was fine, because they did faulty statistical math, that, that same thing applies here. We don't want to line up a series of fail, failure points, assuming that they're all. Uh, statistically insignificant, only to have a cascading failure effect. What that, what that profile is, is I'm interested more to have this conversation to figure out what, what our risk averages are.
Tim.
Yeah, I, I agree with, uh, Megan's point, and I think, uh, part of the point that Grant's making. In that we, uh, we do need additional information, uh, to reasonably make this decision. The concept that somehow something would go wrong. With the, uh, hydropower system, and we would have a complete system water, complete water system failure. To me is, I'm just trying to wrap my head around it, and I really can't, you know, there is. It seems like the probability of that happening is very low. I'm not exactly sure how that would happen. So I think getting a different opinion would be helpful, uh, probably from N Line. Would be, uh, good to have their input. In it, but you know, I agree with Megan too. You know, that it's important to understand the risk, because it is our water system.
Thank you, Tim.
Thanks councillor.
Yeah, I'll just say that I agree with what the councillors have said, particularly councillor Saunders, uh, you know, there's been some discussions about. Uh, other things that could be done, um. May, maybe the other things that could be done seemingly not going to, to get it within a, an unacceptable amount of risk. But I think that every avenue should be exhausted before we give up. It's a critical project, uh, for us to meet our energy goals, um, and. Yeah, I mean, uh, all, all avenues exhausted, and if we get to that point where all have been exhausted. We should be having more discussions about other points, uh, in which we could do this, uh, this type of project as well. So I, it's, I'm just not ready to give up on it either.
Mark. Uh, yeah, it's, thanks to John and Abigail, I was able to meet with them today, and I think some of the others here, here did as well, so. Um, I, I think it's pretty fascinating, um, we certainly, as a council in the past. Understood that there was, there is, you know, we're putting something that spins inside of our one straw. So, so there was some risk inherent in that, but, but we were convinced that it was a manageable risk, and, and so that's. And, and I'm still personally at the, if it's manageable, if we can reduce the probability of a failure to. Near zero, we're, we're, we're golden, and defining near zero is harder. Um, I, I wrote down a couple of things, and I emailed them to Abigail, which is, one, there is such a thing as a failure mode. Effects and criticality analysis in the engineering world, which is basically what, what are all the things that could go wrong? And how critical are them, they, when they go wrong, um, and, uh. And then, and then you can sort of do it bite by bite a- as far, so I, I think that something like that is a good idea, albeit. Probably not a full FOMICA analysis, um, I, I would encourage us to talk to, uh, the. Turbin, you know, the company and, and what, N Line? Um, you know, wh- why is the turbine sensitive to power outages, what, you know, what, what have they seen in other systems? How do they, how do they reduce the risk to downstream pressure reduction valves and, and things that they've already installed? You know, blah, 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 all the, all these good things, um, and then I, I think this is Abigail's idea, which is to, you know, have. Um, both the current city ma- uh, city engineer and, and Stoner Bell, who was the city engineer at the time. Just sort of look at these things, and, you know, with a, with a couple hours analysis, sort of give their opinion on, on. You know, are we, are we in dangerous territory, you know, where, where is the needle with respect to red and green zones, right? And so, um, so I, I, I think that those are just suggestions of what to do as a next step. As far as, uh. Getting a handle on what the actual risks are, and how, how they're mitigated, so.
Right, I have an additional question, uh, in the past, uh, has the effect of a. Hammer, like a hammer, uh, going through the pipe, um, the, has, has there been discussion about the possibility of the pipe breaking? Cracking some effect happening to our water supply pipe itself? Um, because if, if that breaks, we'd, we'd have to replace that, has there been, any talk about that in the past?
And council has not discussed it, I mean, I, I will say, and, and this is more from my day job than knowledge from. Council conversations, you know, if a pressure surge occurs, it will find a weak point, and it will break that, it's not gonna like blow out twenty, twenty miles of pipe. Um, and so it is something like, and I, again, I'm hoping we already have this, given the critical nature of our water system. If you have replacement parts, you will, you know, whatever the connection is, or the, or the weak point, if a joint cracks, like. You would have to replace that, yes, um, but I'm hoping we have things on hand that would be able to do that.
That kind of information would be helpful.
Yeah.
Our public works expert has just stepped up.
Uh, we, we currently have, uh, relief valves, uh, set up in our line, uh, that, that do exactly like you say, in a rise of pressure. In a, in a pressure reducing valve failure, uh, it'll relieve that water, so it, it, it has the ability to dump the water instantly. Uh, there's one on the B Bridge, there's one right downstream of this location, uh, that does this exact thing, so, um. There's one there, there's one at, uh, down by Tucker Park, right before it goes up the hill, there's three hundred pounds coming in, uh, the three hundred PSI coming in on that one as well, so. Um, there's, there's current relief valves, uh, installed, and then most of our PRV valves, our vaults have, uh, relief valves inside of them as well. Uh, the different zones that we have, so that's currently how we're relieving any. Uh, failures, uh, based on our pressure using bolts currently.
If one of those fails, how long does it take you to replace that second pipe?
It's never happened. That's a.
But if it did.
It would all depend on what happened, yeah, it, it would depend on what happened, where it was at.
Where it happens.
Yeah, I mean, last time we lost, uh, any, um, uh. Water in our twenty-four inch transmission main was when a contractor stuck a drilling, uh, uh, bore through the side of it. Um, and we went on a boil notice, we lost water for roughly twelve, twelve hours after that, and then had to go on a boil notice after that, so. Um, currently we have about, uh, three days of water at our five million gallon reservoir, so if there is catastrophic failure of our twenty-four inch main. We have about three days of, of water, uh, we do have any ties with Ice Fountain and Crystal Springs as well, that we could use if we had to, and we did use them last time.
Did that answer your question, counsel, or do you have additional follow up? Okay.
I will say, uh, one thing, earlier, the, the discussion about, uh, failure of the turbine would be in a, a power loss situation, and. We have, uh, so, so the, the location of this, uh, turbine is in an area that loses power quite often. Often enough that we had, uh, Pacific Power install a, um, a, uh, like another meter on our meter at the chlorine building. Uh, so they could get the statistics on how often they were losing power, we were having like, uh, brownouts up there, um, so that's really the. That's what would cause, uh, a failure to determine this loss of power, so, um.
Megan.
And I don't know the specific technology of this turbine, which is where I would like to talk to N Line as well, but it is, you know, so we operate two hydro plants for my day job. Power outage just happened multiple times a year, um, and it's still, the turbine slowly spins down and slowly closes, and we don't get pressure surges from that. So I, I imagine there should be some technology available or a setting within this that we can set that does mitigate that risk. And again, whether it's that, or these, you know, the other pressure, the surge tank, and the other things that were in the presentation, or all of the above. Um, I do, this is just my bigger thing of, these technologies aren't new, water hammers as a risk in water systems is definitely not new. That's been since the existence of pressurized pipe, um, and so I, I. I want to make sure we're actually exploring these options and really looking into what can work. Uh, given the, you know, as, as Doug said, given the importance of this to meet other council goals. Um, so yeah, I'm agreeing with other folks that I'd love to hear from N Line, it seems like, I think it was a subcontractor that actually did the water hammer study.
Right, a subcontractor of it that N Line hired.
Okay, potentially we could bring that, I mean, it's, that certainly seems like an area they have expertise that they could talk about, um. You know, ma- and I, you know, I'd asked John this in our, on our side meeting, but. Um, actually understanding, you know, the pressurizing of the pipe versus the safety factor, um, when, you know, when you look at those charts and it says, okay. It's, you know, you still got seventy PSI with it before you hit the safety factor, um, like I read that as, oh, it's safe, but I don't know enough about pipe to. So that would be an area I'd love to learn more.
Um, great, thanks councillor.
And then I don't know who could give us this information, but it is, like, again, these are, these are operating around the country, um. You know, I know even like Middle Fork Irrigation District has a PRV and turbine paired system in their system. Of like, I don't know if we can bring in, you know, someone independent of, how's it been working for, you know, presumably decades, if it's someone like Middle Fork. Um, maybe that would help give us some, you, you know, learn where there's red flags, or, or give us some comfort.
Thanks.
So I heard Abigail say, you want.
Thanks, Adam.
You want the homework that we.
That's right.
You want to hear what homework we want?
Yeah.
How, how are we doing?
Whole page.
Great. Other comments, input? I, I just want to, a- as I hear, I mean, we're, we're, the, the majority of councils in violent agreement that we want to. Get, carry on and learn more about this, we don't want to cut bait and get out. I, I, it occurred to me when I first heard about this, that. Developing some s- smallish scale hydro in our city is a very important thing, but the single straw to. All the drinking water in our city is, uh, essential, irreplaceable thing, so. I, I'm quite open to the fact that, you know, there might be a risk level that we're uncomfortable with, and let's be. And let's be damn sure that it's below that.
Very good. So I have heard a number of questions, taken a lot of notes. I'll go back and watch this again tomorrow so I get everything. And I have received some questions from some of you in the last couple of days, so I'll add those to the list. But if you have additional thoughts, you know, this is also new for all of us, right? We've only known this for a week. So if you have additional thoughts and questions, please send them my way and we'll probably try to bring this back to you in early October, so.
Can I just briefly follow up on the mayor's comment? And I think part of the, part of the assessment would be, you know, looking and exploring the, for one, the breadth of this technology, right? And how many times that it's actually really failed? To the point where it's been catastrophic. Cause I, you know, I just don't, I'm just not seeing it, right? It's just, uh, if it, you know, had a high probability of failing and causing catastrophic consequences, people with, wouldn't still be doing it. So, you know, there's if, if the installation of the inline hydro in and of itself is, you know, adding to the risk. Then, you know, again, I agree with Megan, but that's something that we agreed to a long time ago.
Thanks, Tim. Anything else on this topic?
Would you guys mind if I, Abigail?
John Graham, our contract engineer.
Great, thanks, John.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm John Graham, the city's contract project manager for this project. And I, I think I wasn't super clear when I discussed a lot of these issues and concerns I have with councillors in the last week. But really there's two big issues for me. One is, we are, first of all, I want to be a stewardship of the city's water supply pipeline and make sure there's absolutely no risk of it failing. That's my number one priority in managing this project. And, you know, after watching you guys talk to Tetra Tech about the stormwater system, I understand how much you guys care about the city's best interest and as stewards of your infrastructure. It's very impressive. And the same thing is happening on this project and I'm not sure I conveyed this clearly to all of you, but we are seeing significant scope creep and additional cost as we move forward. And we are at 50% design today. And the project should not be changing significantly, but it's going to. The building's going to have to get bigger because I asked N-line to do this water hammer analysis because of my concerns. And they found out that yes, we need to add a surge tank. The surge tank was not in the original design, the 50% design drawings. Both, so the building needs to get larger, which will increase the cost. And these kinds of changes at this point of design concern me greatly. They shouldn't be happening. And I also believe that the existing PRV station that we have out there, which is in a very deep manhole and there's no electricity and no telemetry in it, will have, probably will have to be moved above grade. Because we have to add electrical controls and telemetry and it can't be in a manhole that's subject to flooding. And this is not in the design either. So my concern is we're going to go from a $2 million project to a $3 million project. And we're having this big change in scope at this late level in design. And that's also, you know, a risk to the city. Maybe we can get there with a lot of due diligence and a lot of extra engineering, but the cost is going to be higher.
Thanks, John. So I think, uh, you know, you just said are some of the mitigations that we could identify and then come back to council, you know, with possible mitigations and possible costs for your review, if that's something that you wanted us to explore.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's a valid thing. I would love, I don't know if it's now or later, a breakdown of those costs. Because I, you know, moving PRVs above ground, I don't see how it would add a million dollars or half a million dollars. I mean, you're talking a bit more, you know, 20, 40 feet of pipe, some elbows, some connections. You know, yes, telemetry, but that's what $30,000, like where are you getting numbers to say there's a million dollars of extra cost?
It's possible. I, I'm not, I'm not saying that's an accurate number. I'm concerned it could get there. My thoughts were the PRVs would need to be moved inside the building, which would also make it quite a bit larger. Because we really need to keep them dry and warm and make sure that the city had, the city staff have easy access to maintain and repair them. Cause they do need frequent maintenance and repair because they're used so hard. So again, I'm thinking that a lot of this stuff may have to go in the building, which would be a big cost increase. But you're right, if we could put them in an underground vault where they're much more accessible, heat the vault, make sure the vault stays dry, that could also work, which would be a lower cost. But these are all big questions again, that why are we asking these questions at 50% design? It shouldn't be happening.
Thank you, John.
You're welcome.
Other questions on this topic?
Great. Well, thank you all for your thoughtful questions and consideration. Please again, send me more questions and we'll come back to you, I think probably in October with an update and more information. Thank you all.
Next on the agenda is a second reading of an ordinance.
Your honor, I'd like to entertain a motion for the second final reading of ordinance 2078 by title only.
They move. Moved by Paulson.
Second.
Second by Saunders.
Uh, roll call councillor subpoena?
Yes.
Councillor Saunders?
Yes.
Councillor Coonahan? Councillor Paulson?
Yes.
Councillor Rivera?
Yes.
Councillor Zan Miller?
Yes.
Your honor?
Aye.
Ordinance 2078 and ordinance amending Title 8 Health and Safety, Chapter 8.20, Abandoned Motor Vehicles, Section 8.20.010 and Lawful Storage of Vehicles Within the Public Right-of-Way or on public property and amending Title 10 Vehicles and Traffic, Chapter 10.36, Stopping, Standing and Parking, Section 10.36.020, Prohibited Parking and Standing of the Hood River Municipal Code to prohibited parking or storage of a motor vehicle, recreational vehicle, trailer or personal property in the public right-of-way for more than one week.
Orderance 2078 is headed second reading and will be outlaw in 30 days. City manager comments?
I have no updates for you.
Committee reports, Tim?
You know, can I have Haley give my committee report?
Doug?
None.
Megan?
Nothing.
Mark?
None.
Gladys?
Nothing for me.
Right.
None.
Dang, a clean sweep. Yes, for the Housing Authority, Rhine Village in White Salmon, which is not in our city, but certainly houses people who we care about, is transferring from West Clicatet Housing Services to Mid-Columbia Housing. And we're, we're, it's, it's a, it's a nonprofit that's not very active, the, the seller. So we're working to recruit community volunteers to increase the capacity of the seller so that we can get that finished and get it transferred over and rehabbed. It's a very important, uh, source of affordable-ish housing in our community. So I'm excited that that's moving ahead. Wanted you guys to know about that. Uh, council comments, Grant?
Uh, an idea that's been bandied about, discussed a number of times by a number of people in the past, has been the concept of consolidating all of our park tree resources all around the, the city, including the port, the parks district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. I've talked with a few people from the other agencies and their general consensus to at least have a conversation about that possibility. No, no conditions, nothing set in stone, but there's interest in having that kind of discussion amongst people.
Cool. Interesting idea. Thanks for waiting in.
Yep. So if, if we would like to do something about that, we can, we can choose to do that and discuss it amongst ourselves.
Great. Put on the list to start talking about Abigail, thank. Anything else, Grant?
Nope.
Gladys?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Abigail gave me a little update about her talking to the local taxi folks. And, and I both applaud you for, for keeping that discussion alive and Gladys has had mentioned it earlier, which is great. Hopefully we can be facilitators as opposed to taxi drivers, so. We already have one of those as mayor, so. And what else? I, I was excited that Coco Guff won, won the US Open. That was sort of, that was adorable, so.
Megan, you got anything adorable? Wait, did I skip over Gladys?
Didn't, no, you didn't. I just kind of blinked. Well, I, I want to address the comment that you just made really quickly because earlier on I had talked about why I'm abstaining from OLCC licenses. And I want to make it very clear that I don't think the, the city needs to, you know, start creating taxi drivers and whatnot. But if there are policies that we have that create these unintentional barriers, that we should understand what that means. So I just want to reiterate and make sure that folks aren't now thinking that we should have taxi services that the city owns. Update or comment was this last weekend, had the opportunity to cut the ribbon for the Viento State Parker, the additional two miles. So that was pretty exciting. Councillor Paulson was there as well as city manager. Abigail was there with me, my young or my beautiful children were there as well. And so they had an opportunity to cut the ribbon too. It's really exciting to see, you know, two additional miles that we have. Megan was also there talking about just routes and Megan Remy, Megan Remy was there to talk about just access to, you know, that some of these kiddos are going to have. And that this will continue to hopefully offer, you know, all backgrounds, access to safe routes and walkable and being able to go on your bike and that that's really important to us as a city and a county. And the opportunities that this has and just the transformational work that's taken place. So, uh, yeah, super exciting, two more miles.
Thanks for being there, you guys representing.
Two real quick things. Thanks to Abigail, Jackie and Doug for being at First Friday. I briefly walked by and saw the beautiful art, so appreciate you taking the time. And then just want to let you all know I'm going to miss the next meeting, so.
Doug?
Uh, yeah, just First Friday. I, I thought we were, it was, it was very well orchestrated by the, the city staff. You know, every time I visited, because I went to every single one, whether I was there at a council capacity or not, the city booth was always very well attended, you know, kudos to Jackie for coming up with some cool things to do. Uh, and yeah, kudos to Visit Hood River for, you know, helping put that on and everything. I think it's really good for the community and shows what we can do when we don't have cars going up and down Oak Street all the time. I, I think anytime we have opportunity to not have cars going up, down, down Oak Street, very, very nice. So yeah, thanks, thanks for putting on all those events this, uh, this year.
And, and as, as Katie said, and you just referred to, that we do June, July, August, September, now we're done. There won't be a First Friday until June. Is that, am I hearing that right?
That's right. There's Halloween and then there's tree lighting in early December, but the First Friday themselves are done.
Great. Not great. Yes, I understand. I don't, I don't, I'm not cheering against them. I, I want to be clear. Okay, there were four, we were at all four. Good job. Thank you. Tim, thank you.
Yeah, just quickly circling back to the committee reports. I did want to mention that the Energy Council met, uh, but I was at the beach and unavailable. So Haley, Haley attended in my absence and sent me better notes than I've ever taken in my entire life. So what I'll do is I'll, I'll commit to you, uh, sending those around to the council.
Super. Thank you, Tim. Thank you, Haley. Mayor comment, so the day before Indigenous Peoples' Day will be Pie with the Mayor. I want to give a shout out to Comey Gorge News for being here tonight. The apparently outgoing incumbent, no, no, no to boom, is passing the baton to, is it Ginger? Welcome. Appreciate you guys. There was there's some news, some giant national foundation is going to be funding local newspapers to provide the kind of municipal coverage that you guys have always done. So thank you so much for this important civic role that is, uh, that is what you're doing. So Pie with the Mayor will be at noon at 10 Speed Coffee on Sunday, October 8th, followed by lunch with the mayor on Indigenous Peoples' Day on the 9th. So that's coming up. That'll be fun. And that brings us to the end. Is there anything else for the good of the order? We are adjourned. Thanks, Tim.
See you, Tim.